Thank you everyone for being here. How are we on volume? Thank you all so much for being here. We really appreciate your attendance. Thank you to our candidates, Michael Henry and Jenny Hill for being here, and our moderator for the day, Loriann Mays. We're really excited to partner with Chattanooga 2.0, the Urban League of Greater Chattanooga, and the Hamilton County Education Association to put on this debate series to kick off the campaign season for our school board candidates. It will prompt some good questions from you guys tonight and ongoing with our candidates throughout the summer. You will get note cards. You should have gotten note cards like these when you walked in. Write your questions on those, and our staff will be circulating. Just hold them up, passing them through the row. We'll do a final call about halfway through the initial set of set questions and pick those up. And both candidates have agreed, any questions that we don't have time to get to asking tonight, they are going to provide written answers for that we'll post on the Unified Ed website. There will be video available of this debate after tonight. And reminder to make sure that everybody knows is registered to vote by the registration deadline on July 3rd and that your calendars are marked for August 2nd for Election Day. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Loriann Mays. She is an education and healthcare advocate and community activist in the Hamilton County area and also a member and District 6 representative on the Unified Ed Ethics Steering Committee. Thank you all for being here.
Good evening, everyone. Can everybody hear me?
Good evening. Thank you to every one of you for coming out. So we're going to get this debate started. So we're going to ask each candidate to introduce themselves in about four minutes. So I'm going to start with Jenny Hill.
I was used to alphabetical. Don't start my timer yet. Okay, all right, let's do it. First of all, thank you all so much for being here. This is an important conversation to be having and at a time when we are primed as a community to make a lot of positive change for our students and for the future of Hamilton County. My name is Jenny Hill, and I decided to run for school board in District 6 for three main reasons. The first is that my husband Jason and I have two children who are public school students, and I think it's really important that our elected leaders have skin in the game. Second, we actually founded our own business 17 years ago, and over the course of my career prior to that and then over these 17 years, I have seen how critical it is that we have honestly brilliant people living in Chattanooga and coming out of our school system. And then finally, the third reason that I'm running is because I recognize that we have haves and have nots in our school system, and I'm just not okay with that. I launched my campaign back in November, and in that time, since then, I have spoken with hundreds of people all across District 6. And I have toured all of the schools and talked with many, many teachers and administrators. And as I've done that, I've noticed three common groups of fears and frustrations that people have. The things that I've picked up on in the Venn diagram of concerns are, first, people are concerned that our graduates are not ready for what's next, that we need to be doing a better job to get our kids ready for college and career. Second, people tell me they just don't trust Hamilton County schools. And third, a lot of people will say to me, "I just don't think the school my child is zoned for is good enough for my kid." And when I ponder these things, what I've come to is it's time that we need to elevate these issues. We need to elevate our expectations. We need to elevate trust, and we need to elevate pride. So to begin, related to expectations, Chad Rogers here at Lookout Valley is a football coach, and he and I have talked about this a lot. We rise to the expectations that we set for ourselves. And as a mom, what I want for my children is for them to be at a school that challenges them, that pushes them to be the best that they can be, that never labels them falsely, that never lets them fall through the cracks. And what I know is that every other parent feels that same way. Mediocre is not good enough for our kids, for any of our kids. As a business owner, I recognize that there are things I want from a Hamilton County graduate. I want them to be able to read. I want them to be able to do math. But then I want more from them. I want creative thinkers. I want lifelong learners to come out of Hamilton County schools. And when we think about elevating trust, my mom and dad, thankfully are here tonight, they taught me that trust is something that's hard to earn, and if you lose it, you're going to have a hard time getting it back. So I want to do a lot of talking tonight about what we can do to improve that. And I'm going to talk about pride more later, but I will say I think Hamilton County schools should be our community's crowning achievement, the thing that we are all most proud of, so good in fact that our elected leaders choose to send their kids to our schools. I'm Jenny Hill, and I ask for your vote on August 2nd.
First and foremost, I want to thank the organizations that put this all together for us tonight: Unified Ed, Chattanooga 2.0, the Urban League of Greater Chattanooga, and the Hamilton County Education Association. Thank you so much for allowing all of us who have vested interest in our community, in our students, in our economy, to come out here and have this discussion. This is a very exciting district, including downtown, including Lookout Valley, some of the most beautiful parts of our state and our nation. So glad that you're all here this evening. I'm the proud son of two military veterans. And as a student, I completed my Masters of Business Administration at the University of Tennessee, Chattanooga. I also completed graduate certificates in business analytics and strategic human resource leadership. And with those combination of skills, I would like to bring a businessman onto the school board. During my time at UTC, I also worked at Eastlake, Howard, and Brainerd. I worked in Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry classrooms. During my time as well, I worked in the UTC's Graduate College of Business. I helped make the office what it is today. It was a little bit disjunct. We had great programs, but we didn't really know how to lock in our students and make the best out of their potential. With my collaboration and the deans, we were able to create a funnel pattern where I would be one-on-one with students' prospective students, talk with them about what their career goals are, talk with them about the programs that we have, and determine the best way that we can fit together and then make sure that they have the resources to make themselves complete this program and if they needed any monetary support. I also worked in the Veterans Entrepreneurship Program at UTC. Mike Walden is the number one sponsor of this program now. This program brings disabled veterans, specifically disabled veterans, to UTC, gives them a crash course MBA, Masters of Business Administration, and then also connects them to community resources, lawyers, accountants, HR, digital branding, helping them create their business. I got to work as a mentor, helping them audit their current situation, helping them hone in on what they can be successful with, with their business, and doing whatever I could to make sure it became a success. You can find several of these businesses across the county and across the nation. I'm here because I have been in the schools. I have witnessed lack of resources affecting our students. I've seen students asleep in our classrooms not because they're tired, but because they're malnourished. I had one of my students miss over half the school year because he had skull damage because of gunfire from outside of his home. And being someone who's witnessed that and it being Teacher Appreciation Week, Educator Appreciation Week, I really want to take a moment to thank them because I don't bring the skills that they do. Our teachers are special, and I don't know how they go in and do it every day. I feel blessed that I have the skills that I do, and I hope that I can come in and support our teachers and our students. All of my literature can be found by a simple search, Michael Henry for the Schools. I want to continue to be transparent with you all, and I want to continue to learn every single day and fight for our students. Thank you.
I just finished my little introductions. So we're going to start with the first question. So I will be asking Mr. Henry. Our community is here tonight, and historically, there has been deep disconnect between our elected officials and the experiences and needs of the Hamilton County residents. How will you ensure, if you're elected, that you will be both transparent and accountable to the District 6 community as well as Hamilton County?
I hope to continue doing what I'm already doing today. I want to be in our schools every single week. Depending on their schedule, I hope to be in every single school in District 6 at least once a quarter. Again, I'm very easy to find. A simple Google search, Michael Henry for the Schools, and you can find my website and my social media. I currently post on there things that our schools are doing to improve the livelihood of our students. I post about how our students are affecting our economy. I post about opportunities in our economy for our students, and that's really where I want to focus. And I want to be accountable, and I want us to measure our success in that way. As a data analyst, as someone who started their own business working with small businesses, entrepreneurs, and startups, I teach them best practices for marketing and business. And I would like to start first with an audit. That's what I do. I audit organizations, show them their opportunities, show them their threats, and then talk about ways that we can improve and develop plans, plans that we can use data-driven decisions to measure our successes. And especially in Hamilton County, where we have so many unique communities, unique opportunities. All of our schools, all of our students can't be measured the same way. All we need to do is use the numbers and use data, use automated ways to measure if this school is in a community that requires metalworking skills. Can we measure that school's success based on how they prepare their students for their local community? I want to be able to create, with Hamilton County Department of Education and the board, these systems that allow normal people, everyone in the community, to see on the website, on social media. That's also what I do with my clients. Make sure that when they are looking at data, they can understand what it means. Everyone can understand what it means. That's what I've been doing when I've worked at marketing agencies. That's my job as a strategic data analyst. That's my job as a marketing performance auditor and a digital media specialist. I want people to be held accountable, and let's measure that success. Let's see if we're improving or not improving unique to Hamilton County. Thank you.
So that question, to me, really focuses on two different things. The first is disconnect, and the second is transparency. So when I think about disconnect, I want you all to know that I am a mom, that I get it, that I am a property owner, I'm a taxpayer, and I get it. I have waited an hour for a bus that's late, and I don't know why. My kids have gone to school with coats and come home without them because the radiators in their classrooms are broken and it's a sauna in January. I have also seen administrators and teachers and coaches pour out their hearts for my children and bring out things in them that honestly I just, I didn't even know they had in them. I have great respect for the work that our teachers and our coaches and administrators do. And I wish it were that simple, Michael. I wish it were that simple, that we could measure things and fix them. I too have worked a great deal with people in poverty. I'm the board chair at Metropolitan Ministries, where we serve the poor, the people who have limited resources, who are struggling to stay stable in their life. And we go into schools in the undercity and help families pay power bills for things. For example, people who are heating their homes with their ovens because they don't have power, they're using gas. So I get that too, and I'm glad that you feel that way. The other piece is transparency, and that is certainly a root of our trust issue. I think I have a little bit different concept of the job of a school board member. I do have faith and respect for the administrators in our school system. And I believe that the job of a school board member is to supervise our superintendent, to be a part of the guidance for our school system, but not to do their actual work. So as a member of the school board, to help with transparency, I would want to put forth a plan that would allow the school board to measure our goals so that the public can easily understand it. I also think it's time for the school board to get out of central office and into the communities, have meetings each month at a different school. And finally, for my own personal responsibility to District 6, I too have a website, votjennyhill.org, where you can sign up to receive newsletters. I will send those out bi-monthly, and they will include information about what has been happening in our school system, the votes that have been brought forth, the issues to discuss. I also will host twice-annual community listening sessions. And for myself, I will send my constituents an annual report of my own personal progress.
Thank you to each of you for answering that question. So on to question two. It's time to start with Ms. Hill. Unified Ed and Chattanooga 2.0 are both committed to ensuring equity for all of our students and young people in Hamilton County. Together, we define equity as all students reaching their full potential by ensuring we have access to resources and support that meet every individual need. In practice, equity will show itself in our work, in the policies we support, the conditions we enable, the coalitions we mobilize, and the systems we seek to improve. We know one-third of our schools, are schools of concentrated poverty, where 80% of more of the student body is eligible for free and reduced lunch. Additionally, given the large size of our district, we know that whole communities can also be isolated from city center resources and opportunities. Historically, across the country, in our country, in our county, we have struggled to ensure racial and socioeconomic integration of our public schools, a strategy that research has shown to be effective for improving student outcomes. As a school board member, if elected, what specific strategies will you employ to ensure a plan that is developed and implemented to fully integrate our public schools to ensure equity for all of our young people? And so I'll repeat that again.
The whole thing?
Not the whole thing. As a school board member, if elected, what specific strategies will you employ to ensure a plan is developed and implemented to fully integrate our public schools to ensure equity for all of our young people?
That good, me?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Well, so as parents, we have an expectation of excellence for our children. Every one of us that bundles our child up and sends them out into the world to a school, we're looking for our child to have the best opportunity that they possibly can. Unfortunately, we do have this situation where we have way too many schools where we have concentrated a significant amount of poverty into small pockets. It stresses everyone in the school. It does not give the children in that school a fair chance. I do believe that every child should have the opportunity to have a great education, and I do believe that is the responsibility of Hamilton County schools and of Hamilton County. When I was thinking about running for school board, there's a lot of political yeah, yeah, yeah that you hear. It's not the part I like. One of the things that made me have goosebumps was the ethics policy for the school board. Maybe that makes me nerd. The first responsibility ethically that a school board member has is to put the student first, to always think about what is the right choice for the child. That makes me excited. The second ethical responsibility is to offer every child equal access, regardless of their race, their zip code, their religion, anything. As a school board member for District 6 and for all of Hamilton County, I will do my duties for our children. Now, specifically about integration. I've studied this a lot. I was recently in Leadership Chattanooga, graduated. And we did a lot of research and learning about this. I'm a pragmatist, and I recognize that a lot of the makeup of our school is representative of our neighborhoods. And I also know that as Americans, we like to be in charge of ourselves and our choices. So practically, I would support first, more schools of choice, opportunities for more open enrollment, and a modified choice model similar to what they're doing in Asheville, North Carolina. And I give a caveat to that. Open enrollment in schools of choice are not useful tools if every child doesn't have the transportation to get there. And that's a big question. Thank you.
I know we've offered ways that you can find us online, but I know not everyone has access to the internet. So I also have a text campaign. Anyone who just has a phone number and doesn't have access to the internet, you can text the word "Henry", and the number is 51660 to receive some of the exact same updates that I provide to those who do have internet access. And I do appreciate that. I'm sure you find this to be a nice suit, but I didn't purchase this. I was given this by someone who believed in me, and I did live in a home that we heated with the stove. And I participated in an organization while an undergrad called Leadershape. Leadershape was number one about teaching you, find your passion. Number two, go out and do it. I found out that my passion was, though we didn't have the most money, I had great parents who were there every single step of the way. And I had to share that gift out to people. I quickly found out I could be a mentor for others. I worked as a resident assistant, worked my way up through student organizations and undergrad, eventually was president of the housing organization, which is the second-largest organization in the school. Worked with a budget of over $50,000. I ran meetings of over 200 people for an organization of nearly 8,000 people. Leadershape taught me to go out and be a leader, and it helped me, with my friend, become co-founder of this organization called Task Force. It's T-A-S-C-Force. It's taking action for social conscience. And it's about being aware of all the things that go on around you. You don't get to see it, but if you look just deeper around the corner, you'll see that not everyone gets the opportunity to live the life that you do. This organization had a two-fold mission. First, we would identify local areas that needed our help. And then second, we would identify international areas that needed our help. Our local focus and our international focus would change each year just to make sure that we covered as many bases as possible. In my first year, which was my senior year of undergrad, I was vice president of the WET as well of this organization. Our local focus was on Knox County impoverished areas. We would go out there and sometimes just bring the kids out to play. Sometimes we would bring activities to help them learn. But giving those caretakers, which were often one grandma taking care of 20, 30, 40 students, just giving them a moment of rest was huge. And then we also raised money for Sustainable Cambodia, which has created a water well system that provides clean water for that village in Cambodia. So I want to continue to implement these things in any way I can.
Thank you for your answers. So at this time, I'm going to call for the audience. When each of you came in this evening, you had the opportunity to pick up a note card. And so what I would like for you guys to do, if you haven't already filled those out, take an opportunity to fill out a question. And Ashley, who's back here, is a cool gray, I think it was the right, not gray, but brown leather jacket. She's going to be coming around to pick up those cards on you. And so those questions will be asked later on. All right. So question three. We're going to start with Ms. Henry. Only 42% of our kindergartners are coming to school ready to learn on day one. The rates of readiness is half that in schools of concentrated poverty. What are your thoughts on the role of early childhood education in expanding programs such as Camp Cape Island that will support 300 rising kindergartners this summer in getting foundational skills to be successful at school?
So right now, Hamilton County Department of Education has 42 classrooms in 25 locations supporting pre-K. That's not accessible to all people. That is not accessible to all people. Again, primarily, transportation can be a huge issue. In District 6, for example, Normal Park does have a pre-K system. This pre-K system is paid for by parents who go to Normal Park. And these pre-K classrooms are held in Normal Park using the same facilities that are geared for by Hamilton County and the taxpayers. Right now, pre-K isn't something that's mandated. There are truancy officers getting people in trouble for not going to pre-K. So at this time, we must be able to augment, Hamilton County Department of Education and the school board must be able to augment those organizations, city and county that already exist, supporting childhood development and families. It is not right now the role of the school board to go into families and tell them what to do before kindergarten. We help inside of the schools from kindergarten as long as we can. But at this time, that must be the focus of some of these other organizations. So let's augment those efforts. Let's determine what is required to make sure that students, once they come into our public schools, are ready to be successful. That is the school board roles and the Department of Education role right now. Let's go to those organizations and help them understand the exact steps to get students ready for that. In addition, let's continue to support organizations that aren't municipal and county organizations. Fundraise, create organizations at your university, like I did, that can go into those local communities and pull those students out and help them and teach them. Do absolutely everything that you can, volunteer. I think I've done that with most of my life and want to continue to do so, and I'll look out for you to do. Thank you.
So I've interviewed a lot of people for jobs over the years, across my career. And myself, as an English major, when I came out of school, I was not ready to work day one. When I interview people, that is a hidden gem. If you can find the person that's ready to work day one, you've saved yourself a lot of time and money. Am I right? It takes a long time to get somebody trained up to do a job the way you need them to. And when I think about the fact that so many children go into kindergarten not ready to learn, I feel like our kindergarten teachers deserve a round of applause. It's a lot to get through a significant portion of the year covering things that in some homes are basic, but in other homes are just not the norm. I think pre-K and early childhood are very important programs. But that pragmatism... But that pragmatist I told you about, she's in here in my mind. And honestly, right now, we have priorities related to Kremlin buildings, to segregation, to lack of strategic focus, to life readiness. And we can't make everything our number one priority. So I applaud the city of Chattanooga. I applaud our two-point-oh constituents and other groups who are doing things like Camp K. I think that's fantastic. But right now, if Dr. Johnson were headed to the county commission with a budget and we wanted pre-K, I just don't know how realistic it is right now. We've dug ourselves, we've put ourselves in a place where we have a lot of room for improvement. That's important, but it wouldn't be my first priority. Specifically to Camp K, I think that that is an exciting program. It is a pilot program in the opportunity zone. And I am excited to hear how it, how kind of results that it delivers for those kids. And certainly, if it delivers and those kids go into school more prepared, then I would be achieving it.
All right, thank you. Onto question four. In the past, there has not been a multi-year strategic plan that guided budget priorities or was directly linked to student outcomes. This means that each year, our community schools face zero-sum dynamic where access to limited resources are not made based on long-term vision for our county schools, but rather based on a crisis framework that continues to happen annually. How are you, as a school board member, if elected, going to advocate for and help build out a multi-year strategic plan and budget that is open and accessible to our community and maintains an equity lens?
So I have served our community as a volunteer and my church as a volunteer and on boards for several years. And one of the most frustrating board meetings I was ever in was about a playground. We were being asked to make a decision about the surfacing for a playground that was not designed, that did not have a site, and that we were not fully informed as to the legal requirements of that place. What responsible decision could we make as a board in that moment? When boards are put into a position to make decisions without a strategic plan, they are bound to make decisions that are not fully informed, that can pull that organization away from its primary mission, and certainly do not move the organization forward. I have great respect for the Mayor's Budget Working Group, which was a group of really, really smart business people in Hamilton County who volunteered their time and turned the Hamilton County Department of Education budget inside out. They strongly recommend a long-term strategic plan, and I stand behind that one hundred percent. That plan would be developed by the Hamilton County Department of Education, and I would advocate that it include community involvement or community participation as well as participation from our other elected bodies. Because if our county commission and county mayor and our foundations, if we're not all playing from the same playbook, we're not going to get very far. I think that that is all I have to say about that. Well, with the exception of, you know, work like that takes time. It's not always fun to do strategic planning. It takes a lot of organization, it takes a significant commitment of resources, of human time and even cost. But in all of my experiences with it, I know that it's worth it. And it's pretty exciting when you've got a strategic plan that everybody rallies around and then you find yourself achieving those goals even faster than you thought you would. Wouldn't it be great if our five-year plan turned into a three-year plan because we started working stuff off our list? Thanks.
Have I been too loud? I just realized this microphone is really close to my face. Okay? I was a part of the budget meeting this morning with the county and got to see that, yes, Dr. Johnson and his team are making great strides and are very exciting. As I've said to so many people before, I don't want to create the change. The change is already being created. I just want to bring my skills and be utilized any way that I can. No, I don't want to do the job for anybody in central office, but if Dr. Johnson asked me to fill that data analytics position, I sure would. I would take it tomorrow. It'd be a lot of fun.
You're going to be on school board.
And so I want to bring the fact that I do that all the time in any way that I can to the school board. I do that for my church. I'm a part of that planning committee for my church, and we have an extensive plan. We have a ten-year, we have a twenty-year, a thirty-year and a fifty-year plan. And I'm a part of that showing the automated way that we change money, move it around, even when unexpected things happen. For example, this morning at the budget meeting for the county, there were a lot of questions coming from county commissioners about, well, why have we moved this? What is this new segment that we're looking at now? Where did this money go? And Dr. Johnson and his team can only do what they can because they are not given, here's fifty thousand dollars, go spend it. They have to guess at a number. They have to use what they've seen in the past to come close to a number. And they might get money taken away and they might get money added throughout the time that they are working through the budget, as has happened several different times. This is something that I have done when working in marketing agencies and with my own clients. Getting the H.D.-level education in the business analytics program at U T C has taught me how to use billions of data points to project so that no matter what happens, you are ready for that and you have met it with thresholds to understand how to adapt when things change. I want to continue to bring that in any way that I can. A good example of this, I don't have a great website doing that, but a great example of this is called the Ohio Checkbook. And this is something that I provide directly to my church, but we don't have that great of a website. But if you look up the Ohio Checkbook, this is a perfect example. That shows every single way that every penny is spent in Ohio. Every state dollar is spent. And it includes specifically the expense types. You can scroll through the top expense types to see where are they spending money? And then also the companies that are getting most of that money, whether or not they're inside the state. Shows where the state dollars go at all times. Thank you.
So at this time, we're going to ask that everyone who has written down a question, Ashley is going to come on and get those note cards from you. So if you have a second question, want to go ahead and get written down, she's coming around to pick it up from you. All righty, so we're going to go into our last question for right now. We're asking for right now because of course, your questions are going to be asked at the end. So question five focuses on workforce development. Workforce development has become a hot topic across many organizations and businesses here in Hamilton County. What do you think about dual enrollment programs? Kind of similar to what is already occurring at Chatham State and other places as well. But what do you think about dual enrollment programs in schools that teach specific skills and lead to the students gaining credentials?
I had my first dual enrollment class as I was a junior in high school. It was an amazing opportunity. I had to work hard to pay for it though. With Tennessee Promise, I'm hoping that we can bring these dual enrollment classes, combining collegiate curriculum into our high schools so that they can not only get a jump start on some of the core classes, but I'd like to continue to work with universities, as I have for several years, to make sure that the curriculum that we're bringing to our high schools is not just to get our students ready for college because some of these students simply will not have the opportunity to do that, to complete college. But that some of these are credit-based, but also skill-based. So they can get a skill and get plugged into an organization that would allow them an apprenticeship, an internship, so that it's not just for college credit. But if later in their life, they do get the opportunity to come back and go to college after they've honed a skill, they already have those credits. It's about teaching one how to fish. It's not about how much money we put into the schools. And this leads back to the socioeconomic barriers. No matter how much money we can give a student in education in the schools, they still go home. They still go home at night, still go home on the weekends, they still go home all summer long. Teach them a skill that they can be passionate about. And I think the best way to do this is work with the universities to bring skill-based curriculum, but also work with local businesses. See if these businesses can pipeline our local talent. Just tell us what the opportunities are. Work with local H R departments, which I've worked in human resources, human resource leadership, strategic human resource leadership, that's what it's about. Measuring what's going to happen and bringing that to our students so they can pick, decide what they're passionate about and start honing that skill even as early as middle school so that by the time that they are ready to leave high school or contemplate going to college, they at least have a choice. These businesses can also offer money. And these local businesses boost our economy. If we can have local businesses bringing public school talent, we all win. That is the only way to break these socioeconomic barriers. There's no way anything we can do just in the classroom will help them break these barriers holding them back now. We must give them a sustainable career that they can work their whole lives to monetarily, with confidence, learn that they can overcome anything. That has to be the focus in our schools. Thank you.
So I agree that the potential for dual enrollment and expanded career opportunities is just tremendous. About eighty percent of living wage jobs now require some kind of post-secondary credential. That's just the world we live in. You need more than a high school education to be able to support a family. Dual enrollment with our TCATs, our technical colleges, is tremendous. But I'm also really excited about what we're doing in Hamilton County right now with future-ready institutes, like the one here at Lookout Valley Middle High for digital media production. The one that's out at Hickson High School, there are a handful actually out there. And those students can graduate with certificates for nursing assistance. They can graduate with certificates to be certified, to be personal trainers. These are things that are going to set you up for a decent-paying job when you are young and hopefully plant that seed of lifelong learning and curiosity for the long term. I think it's important that we recognize that one size doesn't fit all. And to Michael's point, not every child is going to choose to try for an opportunity to go to college. If a child has that in them, I think we need to push them. We need to elevate our expectation for them and encourage them to be a P H D, to study like you have studied. And my son, he's interested in being a bike mechanic right now. As entrepreneurs, we're saying, well, maybe we can design bikes. Then he's saying, well, maybe I'll be an engineer one day. You know, we'll see where that goes. But he's got a seed of lifelong learning and curiosity that's going to push him. As a business owner, I also have recognized the struggle that my clients face. Our company works with a lot of equipment manufacturers that work internationally. And the number-one struggle they have is filling the jobs with qualified applicants. I recognize that things like dual enrollment are going to provide an engine for our economy. It's a win-win-win for everybody involved.
Are we still allowed a minute rebuttal to questions?
Yes. So, Anne, you have a rebuttal?
Sure. Just to add on, also worked with some small businesses, startup entrepreneurs. We have very similar experience in that way. And that's one of the reasons why I got involved in this is because in the Innovation District in Hamilton County in Chattanooga, we are so successful and we're bringing a huge influx of population here because we are that. We are innovative. We empower our people to start from nothing, accept an idea and a passion and go do it. So I want to make sure, because I've seen it, I want to make sure that we don't lose any more of these startups because they can't find talent here because you have overeducated people requiring too much money in there. And we want to be able to give them inexpensive labor and we want to give our students opportunities to learn. Both of these two pieces can come together because we are innovative and we are collaborative in Hamilton County.
I'm going to need a rebuttal. I haven't got a single one this whole time. I want to keep innovation here, but I don't want to do it with cheap labor on the backs of Hamilton County students. I want a better Hamilton County. I want my kids to be able to choose to do whatever they want and I don't want them to have to do it for some cut rate cost. That's all.
So another piece to this question. So from around the years of about nineteen sixty-three until about, you might want to say nineteen ninety. So you have District Six and you have District Five. Several of those high schools in those districts offered vocational programs. So you're looking at that around years where vocations were actually in these Chatham Public Schools because that's still, we had a semi-school system and then emerged to Hamilton County. But you had these thriving vocational schools. One, which is no longer, which was Kirkman Technical School. And then also you had De Howard School. I have several members of my family that took auto mechanics. They took barber hospitality. So when they graduated, they obviously had these certifications via the state of Tennessee. During that timeframe as well, we also saw that students across the board in those particular district schools were excelling. So not only were they excelling academically, but they were also excelling by pursuing something that will provide them immediately with a career when they graduate from high school. Do you all feel that if we focus more, not necessarily saying that we're going to provide all of these different opportunities for students, but if we focus a little bit more on the total child or the total student and what it is that they want to be and give them those opportunities and tell them, hey, we have dual enrollment, but here's what we can provide you with right now, do you think that that would help with the success in bringing Hamilton County back up to where it once was? So I'll start with, I'll let Michael go first.
For those of you who aren't familiar, Kirkman Tech is where the lookouts are now, the Chattanooga Lookouts. And when Kirkman, like you said, merged, most of that went to Howard, the Howard School of Academics, which is a school in which I worked. And over time, those resources just kind of vanished. And that's because, as we've seen in our schools, it's about constant, consistent focus and maintenance. As I said, you have to be able to focus on some of those skills and not just college. And I'm so glad that we are here in this school tonight because this school offers auto body, metalworking. But they also offer skills that don't require college education, digital media production. And these students live in a world of digital media. And these students live in a world of digital media and social media, and so they come out way more qualified than any of us do in school to fill these roles. So for someone who goes and gets their masters and tries to compete in a social media spot, I can't be beaten by someone who's coming out of high school who knows that they're good at that, who knows that they can do that because they do it all day long. I can't compete with that talent, and that's a good thing, that's a great thing. So I want to continue to bolster the schools that have programs like this here at Lookout Middle High, Lookout Valley Middle High, but also, we need to, again, focus our resources based on the local community needs. You can't in one school have absolutely every single program available, it's not possible. But let's have some of the essentials. Let's talk about what it's like to raise a family. Let's talk about what it's like to file taxes. Let's talk about what it's like to run a house, the maintenance on a house, the maintenance on a car. Let's get those essentials in there, and then the rest of our resources, we can focus on what our community close at hand requires.
So Gloria, I think that that question highlights a couple of trends in education. Um, the first is the, um, the siloing of students into college as a college prep curriculum that is a nationwide trend. Um, and then the second, I think is addressing the whole child, makes me think about the testing culture that we have in the state of Tennessee and nationwide, that I know from a lot of teachers, causes them to feel a real push-pull of, how do I nurture the entire child, um, when what I'm graded on is A, B, C, and D? Or all of the above, or some of the above. If you've tried to take one of these tests, it's insane now. I will say that there is a danger in relying on technical education to push kids towards something simply because maybe they are struggling in an academic course, or are low income. Consequently, and I think that that happened, um, in some of our, um, decades past, where we said, well, we've got this college career path, or college path, excuse me, but, um, you're not really good enough for that, so we're gonna send you to tech school. Now, that's not everybody, but that certainly happens, and it was something that we can push low-income students away from other opportunities, and I'm not okay with that. I think that our future-ready institutes present a fantastic possibility for Hamilton County students. I talked with a young woman who goes to Lookout Valley. She has taken autobody seven times. There's just not enough choices. She doesn't want to do autobody, I'm thinking, you've got a great hobby on your hands, but she, she wants to do other things. And so I love that the future-ready institutes are gonna give her classmates the opportunity to say, you know what I'm really interested in is aviation. I wanna go learn how to fly a plane. I wanna know how that thing stays in the air. I wanna come to Lookout Valley and learn how to do video. But I would point out the fact that you do need some secondary accreditation to make a living wage in this world. It is a simple Band-Aid to imply that you can come out of school with a relatively short amount of training for, uh, for a nursing assistantship, for example. Those, uh, students will make about fifteen dollars an hour. That is a great wage to start out, but it's certainly not the thing that's gonna help them flourish in this world and raise their families in the future. I want more for them.
So we're gonna get into our audience question and answer at this time. So I'm gonna start with question one, which is highlighting the priorities. It states, "It is easy to talk about goals for the schools and the districts, but realistically speaking, what would be your two to three action items or goals for your first year on the school board if you are elected?" And I'll start with you, Mr. Henry.
Number one for District Six is continue to do what I'm already doing. District Six and then our adjacent districts are more unique than some of the other ones because there is so much crossover. We have a lot of the magnet schools in which parents, students live in one district, and then they go to school in another district. So even with the future-ready institutes, if I have someone who wants to come here for digital media production, the new future-ready institute, though Lookout Valley has had this program for a while, how can I represent them if they live in an adjacent district? So my number-one thing is to continue to work with the other school board members in these adjacent districts, not just that, county commissioners and city councilmen, because it is not an independent piece. The school board cannot work alone. The county commission cannot work alone, the city council cannot work alone. And above that as well, then you're looking at state government. I have taken the time to sit down with absolutely every single person who will give me time in the county commission, in the city council, in the state, wherever, anyone at all who will give you their time, and I think that's the number-one thing to focus on. Number two is, once we figure out what those things are we need to address as collaborative adjacent districts, let's go out and do it. Let's not each try and fight our own battle. We can work together because the entire county has to work together. It shouldn't be District Six just going and working on something while District Five does the same thing. Let's work on that collaboratively. One of the answers that I put on this Unify Ed, the, the one that was posted, the Unify Ed questionnaire is, can I work with the other school board members to audit each other and work collaboratively? Let's work together. Once we've made those connections, let's work together on the issues that we all agree on. Number three, what is the most efficient way we can spend our money? Right now, we have transportation on contract. Unfortunately, we've seen how that can end up in some situations. We have custodial work on contract. Can we bring these in-house? That's the only way we can be more efficient with our money and cut some of those corners that we don't need to be spending, and we trust someone else to do. Let's trust our own people, our own employees, and make efficiencies that way, so that we do have money freed up to support absolutely every student.
My top three priorities: strategic plan, independent facilities, audit, multi-year budget process. That is the basis for moving our school system forward. We need a plan that we're all on the same page about. We need to know the status of every building from an outside perspective, so that we know which ones have significant enough needs that we need to figure out how to walk away, and which ones are still in a place that we can maintain them efficiently. And we need, once we have that strategic plan and the facilities audit, to then begin budgeting based on a multi-year schedule. Michael made a great point when he said, "Right now, our school system goes to the county commission, and they don't know how much money they're gonna get when they leave there." That is tough. Where we're at right now is, we make a decision based on what's right in front of our face. We're choosing the playground surfacing before we even have a plastic playground to play on. We need to be looking, for District Six, our buildings are crumbling. What do we need to do to start looking at facilities here? We've said, no, 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 for so long. We don't have the information in front of us. To Michael's point, we need more data. So we need a strategic plan, we need to know the status of our buildings, and we need to budget over multiple years so that we can re-realize savings. Sometimes you have to spend some money to save some money.
All right, so our next question focuses on zoning. It states, "Schools with high concentrations of poverty face many challenges as a result of childhood trauma and generational poverty and its effects. Currently, many of our school zones are made up of almost entirely impoverished students, and these schools are consistently low-performing as a result, no matter what interventions are given. Do you support a plan to redraw district lines in a way that creates more racial and economic balance in our schools, since diversity almost always raises achievement?"
When we have changed the student makeup of our schools, when we have fully diverse schools, when it comes to socioeconomic diversity, racial diversity, all students do better. That is the ideal that we should be striving to achieve. I mentioned before, I know that people prefer to make a choice than to be told what to do. So I would like Hamilton County, first, to really double down on improving opportunities for people to choose the school that they feel like is the best school for their child. Zoning is something that we've gotta keep in our back pocket. We know that that works, but we're gonna have to have a lot of community involvement to make those decisions. When we talk about transparency, the community has to be involved every step of the way, in large part to really fully understand the why of this. Because every one of us cares about our own kids. We care about our own grandchildren, we care about the value of our own home. The school board and the school administrators can encourage all of us along the way, but what we've seen in the past is that if the community's not on board, we're gonna figure out a way to get out from under it. So I'd like to see us all work together with the appreciation that, to achieve equity, we all need to live and be in school together.
Back to working with county commission, city councilmen. Right now, the county commission is one who draws district lines, and a lot of you, especially ones who live here in District Six, might be surprised that District Six pays the most taxes of any district in Hamilton County. But they're not asking the school board how to help draw those lines. I've started having those conversations with the county commissioners. It's not something they've ever had to think about until you ask them about it. That communication has been started. Let's continue to build on that, because the money drawn from our taxpayers is a product of the economy there, which is a product of the performance of the schools there. As I've been a part of a case study, or, excuse me, not been a part of, learned from a case study, I didn't do it myself. It's not about mixing the students, blending the students, the socioeconomic, that's, that's not what makes the difference. I know it's important, but I've, I've been in Howard School when GPS was able to come and spend a day in Howard School. I've seen my students laughed at by other students because they'd never seen such poor conditions in the school. The solution comes from the adults. It's about combining the parents' efforts, it's about combining the community's efforts. Taking students and putting them in another school, that's not the solution. Though, if we can combine our resources and then, coincidentally, our students start to look a little bit more diverse in their schools and in their zones, that's great, but it's not the other way around. I'm so glad everyone is here, because you're here because these organizations have this discussion. Let's continue to push this discussion forward from talking about it to being about it and doing it. I feel like I've been walking the walk for several years now, getting in the most at-risk situation in which I can be, because I know that's where I can make a difference, because that what is really here in my heart, and something that I've taken home with me so many days from those schools.
All righty, on to the next question. On a scale of one to ten, where do you think our schools are here in Hamilton County in terms of serving as a platform for success? And how do each of you measure success? Miss you.
Well, we know that fifteen percent of Hamilton County graduates are considered college or career-ready based on their ACT scores. So if we use that as a marker, that fifteen percent out of a hundred are really ready, that leaves eighty-five percent. I don't think that a test score can be the definition of a child, but I do think, to Michael's point, data is important. I don't wanna give it a one to, well, what the heck, I'll give it a one to ten. I'm gonna give us a four, in terms of ten being, we've got everybody firing on all cylinders. We're just not where we need to be. And I know that our teachers are working really, really hard to try to get every kid there, but they simply don't have the resources that they need to push the kids and to encourage them the way that they'd like to. I'm thankful that my kids have two parents that can augment their education, and that we're a school, um, that I do trust to educate them, but I want that for every family in Hamilton County. It's a hard question, so...
Who did it? Who did it?
Oh.
I don't wanna put a monetary value on it either, but I would, I would have to, I would have to say a four as well. It's, it would come down just to the numbers, if you're talking about percentage of people who are successful, and four out of ten, forty percent out of a hundred, that's kind of where we are right now. But we have opportunities to get better. In my positions, it's been my job in marketing agencies to be able to report to the agency, what was my return on investment? Do I wanna continue to work with you? Not too long ago, the state said, "We don't wanna work with Hamilton County anymore. Give us these schools. We don't trust you, we don't see any return on investment from the money that we're helping you to run these schools." Dr. Johnson, thank goodness, said, "We'll work with you, but you have to include more schools than just five," creating the opportunity zone. If we can, in some way, instead of measuring students by test scores, especially when tests are failing, so what was all that work and stress for? If we can move to a way that we determine ROI, return on investment, to our students, are these dollars turning into student success? And we can measure those things through career success, through salaries, through economic growth. Can we then prove to ourselves? Can we make projections? An AB test, scientific method, is this working? No, we're not seeing an economic improvement, let's move somewhere else. Let's put a return on investment of our dollars into our student's success, prove ourselves, prove to the county, regain the trust of the community, regain the trust of the state. It is Dr. Johnson's number-one focus to make Hamilton County the fastest-improving district in the state. So let's prove to the state, there's no way to prove to the state that we're performing better when you can't show it through tests, which I don't think you should show it through tests anyways. So let's develop a model that we can- So let's develop a model that we can show the state, we do know what we're doing, we have schools here, we trust our teachers, we trust our students. Let's prove not only we are the fastest improving, but we are the most efficient district in the state.
All right, the next question is in reference to special education. Are you familiar with IDEA, federal special education law, and will you make compliance in Hamilton County a priority?
I know some about special education law, but I have a lot to learn. My daughter has an IMP, and so I've sat in those meetings and I've seen the paperwork that we have to study and sign. I've also talked to a lot of families who feel like their children are not being fully served by Hamilton County schools as part of the special education program. So I actually have an advisor who's recommended that I do the training that parents of children in special education actually take so that they'll understand their life and understand the laws better. And that is something that's on my calendar for the fall.
Lot of issues to understand and research for school board for Hamilton County, a lot. And one that's not talked about enough is special education, and that's why it is, it is on the to-do list for law of special education. But in my experience, I've been a mentor for people who are younger than me, I've been a mentor for people the same age as me, I've been a mentor for people older than me. And, and I, when I was an undergrad, I worked with one of my really close friends who, I would help him study and we would study together sometimes he'd definitely help me study, he was definitely better at music than I was. And he was on the autism spectrum, and most other people just didn't get it. They didn't get it, doesn't matter what you want to call it, who he is, the way he thinks. If you just treat him like another person, you equip him with the confidence and the ability to just act like everyone else. During the same time, I was working with a family whose, whose son was also on the spectrum and, and they would call me in to work with them because there was no reason to treat him like anyone else. And that's the same thing with early childhood development. Don't baby talk your children. It's about send and receive. You get what you give and that's how you develop. The more you give, the more you get in return. So I've seen that work in instances of special education. I've also gone to the Dawn School and worked with them and asked them, "What are their needs? How does this, how does this all work?" Right now, the Dawn School is supposed to be a place for therapeutic environment for students who can't right now fit in the culture of a normal school because of some kind of behavioral issue caused by psychological or emotional distress. But right now, so many students are just being put there because of behavioral issues and not a deep-rooted issue. But their most successful thing that they focus on is PB, positive behavior. Reinforce positive behavior with positive behavior. It seems so simple, and it seems like we should all know how to do that, but it took me asking them what works for them to tell me, "This is the model. This is theoretically tested and proven, and that's how we get our students back out of the Dawn School and into a culture where they fit in, just like every other kid because they are just like every other kid, and they need us to be successful." Thank you.
So our last question from the audience is focusing on budget. What experience have you had in managing large budgets for an organization or company?
So, in my experience, I have been part of a growing publishing company that I was employee number seven, and when I left, we were at fifty people. And in doing that, I managed resource budgets for the department that I quickly became the head of, though not large, certainly was throwing me in the deep end there as a young My husband and I own a seventeen-year-old business that employs ten people. Budgets are a part of our daily reality. Cash flow is something that has to be on the front of our mind all the time and planning for growth and doing it in a conservative way that we know that we can provide and be a good steward over the long term. Also, I am the board chair for a nonprofit here in Chattanooga, Metropolitan Ministries. During my tenure there, we have grown substantially, and part of being on a board is studying that budget. I'm not going to speak to their exact financials right now, but I can tell that those are decisions that, I mean, I was just in a conversation about that today. How do we manage an endowment? What do we want to do with the windfall? We need to move different things to different kinds, live within our needs, but make sure that we can live our mission. So it's something that I have many years of experience in and certainly am ready to jump in lead first.
I mentioned it briefly, you can also refer to it in the packet of the questionnaires. I was president of housing. I do have to say that was probably the most exciting time of my life and my highest accolade for undergrad is, I had so many people who would come to me for help, and especially when you're living in university housing. You're there because your parents aren't there, otherwise you'd just be living at home and saving money. Those are at-risk students, and especially an undergrad. I went to the University of Tennessee in Knoxville. You see a lot of those students fall off. As I mentioned, that budget was around fifty thousand dollars, and in my time as, I was vice president and national communications coordinator, I went to so many conferences and would present about our budget because the University of Tennessee had, by and large, one of the largest housing communities in the entire nation, about eight thousand people, budgeted again about fifty grand. And I saved more money than any of my advisors had ever seen because that's what I was focused on doing, and it came from collaborating with other organizations, of which I was also a part. As I mentioned, I was vice president of that organization task force that I helped start. I was treasurer of the Graduate Student Association once I came to University of Tennessee, Chattanooga. I was also secretary at that time. In undergrad, again, I was on the executive board for the Student Government Association. I was president of Omicron Delta Kappa Honor Society. That's what I loved to do, and I was taught that that was my passion, that was my place in the world. And I feel blessed to have this opportunity to continue to fulfill that goal. I own my own company, it's just me. I'm the treasurer for my own campaign, it's just me. As a data analyst and as someone who worked as the strategic data analyst in marketing, some of our media channels had twenty million dollars, and I had to prove where those twenty million dollars was going. And then again, the return on investment. So it's not just looking at a budget, it's looking at the reverse of the budget too, the revenue-driving side of the budget. I'm sure many of you have the same thought, but in undergrad, I thought, "Business degree, that's silly, anyone could do that." It has way more math than you'd expect, a whole lot more math. And balancing budgets, creating balance sheets, created automated balance sheets, things that can adjust and be adaptable, I love doing that. That's why I did the data analytics path. They taught you really, any number that goes in, you have to have good numbers going in to have good numbers going out, and it doesn't matter if those numbers are dollars, students, success measurements, whatever it is, we were taught to just work as hard as you could and make a good product.
Thank you, Jenny Hill. So we're getting ready to close here, and so we'd like for each of you to do your slow opening, just give us your closing remarks. So let's start with Mr. Henry.
I'm glad I finally get to take a breath and just tell you how much I am thankful that you all are here. In running my campaign, managing all of that, managing my own business, feel alone a lot of times, and I know that's how some of the students feel, and just to see that all of these people are committed to this process, no matter what, I thank you, I thank you for spending your time, continuing to spend your efforts, and just be here tonight. Please approach me at any time if you have any questions. I have some of my materials outside, that is my cell phone number, please shoot me a text, call me anytime. You can find everything at Michael Henry for the Schools, I have my email on there as well. I have teachers who have reached out to me and asked me questions about their schools even on my Facebook, so I try to be a resource of knowledge, that's why I'm here for you. Again, thank you so much.
I'd like to close by saying that we've talked a lot tonight about many of the difficult issues that are facing Hamilton County schools. But I wouldn't be up here running because it's hard, he's right. I wouldn't be running if I didn't feel like we had an opportunity right now to affect change. There are good things happening in Hamilton County. Our community is aware of the needs that we have in our schools, and I believe that the next step to move all of this forward is to have elected leaders who are forward-thinking and are ready to make education their priority. If you want to elevate education too, I do invite you to help spread the word about my campaign. We need lots of volunteers, and you can volunteer at my website, votejennyhill.org/give-enrolled. With all of us together, we really can make a difference. So I thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you all for participating, each of the candidates. You guys have done an awesome job answering the questions, and then of course for the audience who definitely posed great questions in conjunction to, of course, what Unifi Ed had to ask. I'm Lori Mayes, it's been a pleasure being the moderator this evening, and I will turn it over to Ms. Henry.
Okay, thank you to both of our candidates and to Lori for moderating tonight, we really appreciate it, and to our co-host, Chattanooga 2.0. A reminder that we'll be doing the District Nine debate next Monday, May fourteenth at Udua High School at six o'clock, and following Monday, May twenty-first, again at six o'clock, the District Three debate at Hickson High School. Stay tuned, follow Unifi Ed on social media. We'll be announcing the District Five debate hopefully very soon, late May, early June. I'm hoping I'm getting that scheduled right now. We will have a video in full of tonight's debate available on our Facebook page by tomorrow. It'll also be posted to YouTube, and then we'll have a more formal edited version on our YouTube channel following that. So follow us on social media, follow our blog, and we'll be getting a lot more information out there. So thank you all so much for being here.